Good evening, everybody. Let the call to order the council meeting for the City of Nelson, December the 12th, 2022. And let's have a word of prayer, please. Father, we thank you for today. Lord, we just ask that you would be with us, that you would lead, guide, and direct us, Lord, as we make decisions here tonight for our city and citizens in it. Father, we just ask that you would be with our police and our firemen and EMTs, Lord, across the counties, and keep them safe. Father, we ask that you would be with our servicemen here and overseas as well. We ask in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you. James, can you do it? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Due to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll take it.
James, okay. Chrissy, James, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Heard you. We heard you, Councilman Taylor. Next up is our public appearance. Is there anybody here tonight who has anything pertaining to our agenda tonight for the council? For me. All right, we'll move into number six. Approval. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November the 14th, 2022?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Chrissy, go ahead. Can I get a second?
Take it.
James, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, William. Next up is department reports. Lieutenant Downey, would you like to counsel me over the Cherokee side, please?
Yes, ma'am. Is it 4:05 next door? Dogwood Pass?
We're the MPO box. We're 239. I think she's 279.
Responded to a call. Her front door was open. I was told that she'd recently passed.
Yeah, I know they have an alarm system or some kind of thing. The light in the back shed was on the other day, too. Like out of nowhere. It was a little odd that they didn't have it.
We can kind of keep an eye on that, just because the house is empty. And just like I've told citizens before, this time of year, keep your cars locked, trunks locked. Just because this is when our entering auto starts picking up this time of year because Christmas is here. So we did a couple of traffic stops down in the south end of the city, down off Jordan Road. But we've had several fatalities over Thanksgiving break and things like that. So probably going to see us start running a lot more speed detection and things like that to get everybody kind of slowed down this time of year. So just do us a favor and, you know, just remember what the season is and, you know, what's around the corner and taking it easy and no reason to rush. Nothing to matter. Be quiet.
Thank you, sir.
Which is a good thing.
Appreciate your presence. Let's see. Next up is Mayor's report. Speaking of reports, I did, I spoke with Chris Stansel about interning to an IGA or SDS for the code enforcement at our discretion. He said he's bringing on a second marshal in January and would get back with us right after the first of the year. Okay. Next up is going to be, I'm going to try to not say a lot about this, but I'm going to say some. I did have a meeting with Chris Stansel regarding lost, just to fill you in because you didn't get an email, I guess. The city did sign at 3.05. That was down from 4% that they had originally offered. It looks like, so we did sign that. And the numbers that were on the paper was Pickens was at 25.26. And then Coors Talk Rock was at 1.69. So if everything goes through the way that they are anticipating it, that we'll be at 3.05.
I think that lasts 15 years, probably.
It does. I was not in agreement of it or in favor of it, but it did happen. I feel like some of the cities that don't have debt, large amounts of debt, and we managed to a budget, got, you know, pretty much got penalized because of that. And people that can't manage their budget and they have a high amount of debt, got a line share because they needed it for their.
I'd rather send that go to the sheriff's department.
I'd rather send it go to the county as well, but it did not.
Exactly that.
So that's all I will say about that one. Well, we want to talk about the Christmas party. I want to thank everybody that, you know, that came out, participated in that. We did have a great turnout. I got some phone calls and some emails, or text messages, thanking us for year after year being there and doing nice things for our community. So that's all because of you guys. So we did have a great turnout for it, and it was nice. I think that's all I have for right now. So I'll turn it over to Miranda for finances.
Okay. All right. So as of November the 30th, our year-to-date actual on revenues is 179,207. That's 28.9% of our overall revenue. Should it be at least 41% or less? Or more on revenue? A few more. Expenditures were at 141,185. That's 22.8% of our overall budget. It should be 41% or less. Yeah, that's as of November the 30th. All right. So general fund bank balances, 994,151. SPOS 4, 226,169. SPOS 2, that's the old Pickens, is 335,780. And SPOS 5, which is the new Cherokee, SPOS to 661,055. Cash reserve is 167,517. And Pickens SPOS 20, which is the current one, is 654,916. And then the grant funds is 252,342. And that's basically all I have.
Miranda, thank you. I'm going to get ahold of Mary Holbrook to find out if we've got surveys back for phase two. And is Michael Kidd called?
I know the survey agent is working on it.
He might get an email. And a couple of different drawings for the park up there. My one question is, is the grant funds, are we using that for the stormwater, the second phase?
Phase two?
Yeah.
Yeah. That should help what we go along with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Either that or, and it said either or because we're hoping to see some property come available here shortly, sometime within the next year or so. And then if that happens, we'll be looking at.
It could be a lot sooner.
It could be sooner. We're looking at that, and if that happens, then we may use it to put a minimum on the council's agreement. So it's just some things that we're waiting to come to fruition before we actually earmark those dollars. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. Maintenance equipment, tilt trailer. Kelsey, I'll let you go ahead. She should have all the documentation on that.
Matt actually went to get prices on this. So there's a couple of different options. The first one that's out at Big Tex is the company that done the Parkway Marietta. There's two different ones. One's a 20-foot, one's a 22-foot. I did go online, pulled some info just from the website that's back. Couple pages in there. But there's some specs on it. I really don't know anything about this, so me running my mouth about it doesn't really get you anywhere. Price-wise, I think this company is probably the best. Nelson Tractor had one, but they're, basically they order from another company, and they're 34 months out. We did get pricing from Gatorade, Gatorade company. They're for a little bit more. And I talked to David today. I think they come with some extra stuff on, he said.
Yeah, it's got two box and extra jacks.
Yeah.
They're just a lot better quality than that. They have to have that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, definitely not like field effects. So theirs range, like right at 14 to 16,000. Nelson Tractors is 11,500. That's for 22-foot. Big Tex. The 22-foot one at Big Tex was right at 10,000. But they all look like they have a 4000 thing.
This is this one here? This is Gator?
Okay. That's the Gatorade. And that's the only thing I could find on their website is that one.
Do you have a picture of the one from Big Tex?
No, they just had these little snap shot things up top.
It didn't show if it's got two box, it's really made on the.
It was all just generic pictures of them on the website, just the specs. You could probably add it because it was like, add two specs and options.
Man, that's, if you look at the one that I'm from Texas brag versus the one that's at Gator USA, you look at the hitch on it, man, that's a whole lot better trailer.
Yeah, we got one for Gatorage, and this is really good.
Well, I mean, this one looks like the Walmart version, and this looks like Cadillac, you know? I mean, it looks like it would, it'll be up under us for a while.
The two box on this one, this mounted like both the spare tire.
Yeah, I see that.
So the others, I've been putting the spare tire or two box.
Yeah.
It's just.
It's got a safety lock on it.
Yeah. We've been using that about three years, and it's, so far it's been really good. But he does have a Big Tex power tube, and it's just lighter made and, yeah. They're good trailers, though.
If I was going down the road with a load, I would want to know I had something under me. That's just me. William, were you, did you pick your packet up? Can you see any, please?
No, I don't have the packets. I just, this time I just print outside.
Okay. Agreed. David, that's, this is your area of expertise, or you want to make a recommendation?
I wish we had more features of that Big Tex, but to see if it does have the two box and.
I think it's an option thing. Like, because even with that last one, it's showing. Like, you see more specs in all of this.
So by the time you add it all in there, you're going to be spending just about as much?
I wish I don't need to. I am curious as to what that would weigh, so that's what I was actually trying to see.
The papers online, but my experience with Big Tex is that it's very specific. Like, you can order whatever you want.
Just add what you want.
Yes. Yeah.
We definitely need a locking two box, we like to put our chains and stuff in.
For sure.
This one's 36.
Yeah, the, I'm going to see all the except the last one, where it looks like it's heavy duty.
This one?
Yeah.
Can you see how much this tilt bed 16K ardbark weighs? Is there a level for that? This is a Gator.
Did they offer a 14K also?
For which one?
The ardbark one?
For the Gatorade?
They did. I just couldn't find a picture of it. So what I wanted, I wanted on 16K, they gave a price.
It's like 13,900.
When that went down, it was like 13,990. The 16K was 15,990.
I mean, the 14K would be plenty heavy enough for what we need. I think that's maybe weighs 10 or 11.
It was right, and it was like high nines to low 10, depending on what was on it.
It's 3,400 pounds.
3,400?
Big Tex.
Did that Gator?
No, the Gatorade, but that's the one we can't find.
Six hundred each, ten to two or more. One hundred pounds. James?
Gatorage moving in with it. Yeah.
Yeah, but the only thing that's not drastically happening, I think.
It's got two jacks.
This is the tilt bed 16K ardbark. And that's one little carry there. How much is that?
David said that a 14K is probably fine. I just didn't find it.
In the Gator USA?
Yeah, this is for the 16K.
That's got steenings channel made.
Yeah.
It makes enough work for you. Steenings.
I'm going to bring over the next capacity. It would probably be much an issue because you'll have it later if you needed for anything.
There's, yeah.
So you, so if, look, we get a, look at the 14K.
The enterprise on that one, which is, I just don't want to cheat, like, that's it.
You know what the cost is?
Yes, 13,990.
13,990, you mean? And it comes with all the same features?
All the same. I just could, I think it was like what they had on the lot or something. It was just how it pulled up. Like, I could find this one, and there was something else, but this is the only one that had stuff I could print out.
Okay. So David, your recommendation would be the Gator 14K?
I think so.
Okay.
It comes with all the, you know, the two box and stuff.
I think so. I think it's.
She pulled up the 14K, and it looks just like it. So it's a tilt neck, power kit, finish, mega toolbox, spare tire.
Like, the other one was 8,000 pound.
Yeah.
And this one's 7,000.
7,000.
Making any calls?
Do you find the weight on it?
No, it's not in here.
Right. We'll get the weight on it, but, we get the weight on both of them. But if you want to go with a 14K, we'll get all the specs on. Make sure that it does before we, before we order.
Big Tex is a 14,000 pound, too. Also, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. And it says, yes, it's 14. GBWR is 14,000.
And that's what Nelson Tractor was recommending. Texas brag. Sent me a ask for the four. They were three, four months out.
Councilwoman Chrissy, are you comfortable with that 14K Gator USA? James? You are, David, you are? And William, you said you were defaulting to David? All right. Can I get a motion to, to go ahead and order the Gator USA 16K ardbark?
14K.
14K ardbark for 13,990. A motion to approve that?
All right. Where do we got to go and pick this trailer up?
It's Marietta.
Okay. Make a motion approved.
Can I get a second?
Take it.
Okay, hold on one second. All in favor? Thank you. So that was unanimous, so that says that the. Okay.
We'll have to make sure that truck is set up with electric traction brakes.
Yeah, we'll probably have.
Take it to Zach's and have him put his on promptly. That's about all I know right now. Here is Zach's truck or something over here. Before they go pick trailer up, probably just have that.
Well, it could be monthly back.
All righty. The next is going to be city sanitation services.
So I think this is just a vote, right?
If you haven't voted to.
We have, I think we talked about it. Everybody was in favor, but we did not formally vote as we did at the second.
So do you know what the fee's going to be?
Right now, the current services for regular services, $15 a month. Senior services, $12 a month.
So why don't you vote on that and to mandate, you're not mandating that people use it, but to impose the sanitation fee and you're providing the service.
Yeah, because right now we have a bunch of different companies, and most of them are paying the regulatory fee, but that, it comes up again in January, so we just need something done before.
Yeah, those you might want to.
Why, just send in letters that.
We can't prohibit them, I don't think.
Can't prohibit them?
I think that's what other cities do. Like, you have one provider for the city.
Yeah.
You have a city service, and that's why I'm in Downey shaking the city.
Ken?
Yeah, because you have one provider, whether it's the city provider.
As long as we can.
Contract with another provider.
They can't come to it. I don't know why anybody would.
Yeah.
Pay twice. I'll check.
What are you talking about, a fee?
It's the same fee that we've got.
It's just the sanitation service.
So everybody would be on the same sanitation. We would provide citywide service, is what we would do.
That's what you're voting.
And you are going to keep all those big trucks that we've got coming in and out of here now paying nothing that's tearing up our roads and our subdivisions.
What if you got people that haul their garbage off?
We have a handful of them.
They still have to pay.
They still have to pay.
We have, then there's a handful of like, there's still a couple of small companies that now are picking up that don't have logos. So I don't know who they are, but.
I'll see if we can.
Now, there are some people that doesn't even, they do the wrong garbage. Yeah. However, if you're.
I don't really, I don't really like the fact that we're just going to start sending a bunch of bills out without people knowing that.
I think this is what every city, I think we're one of the oddities that don't do this at all, much less the fact that we're allowing.
Yeah, you can't pick a choose if you do it, you got to.
Come in and do it. Yeah.
But I mean, if you don't have a garbage service, do you got to force somebody to get it over? I mean, like.
You're making, all the citizens have to pay the fee. You're not allowed to exempt people from the fee. They're not opt out.
Yeah.
It's just that I'm aware, and I could look into that further, but I believe.
How many houses are we talking about?
It's just.
We currently have roughly 500 parcels, I believe, that we collect taxes on approximately. According to the census, about 50 houses disappeared.
If there's somebody that's hauling, that's hauling their garbage off, and it is a hardship, then the council could look at those.
What if you got a piece of land in the lot with no house on it? I mean, you're.
No, you're not charging that.
No, this would be.
You're just charging the residence.
This is per home. It's per home.
So we're big roughly 500 houses?
Probably 520 something.
I'm going for a green. We'll have to get back and actually check it. Because it's like, we had a mail-out letters when we did the survey thing.
The big thing is, is eliminating the trucks that are coming in here tearing up our.
We also have the big companies that are buying out the other companies. So it started out with regulatory fees where you were getting like eight, and then it's, like Advance got bought out by somebody, and Sand Tech is bought out by another one. North Metro got bought out.
Maldon's on that.
Yeah.
I always try to have a local one, and every time I get one, they get bought out. And then I end up back with the giant one that I didn't want.
So you have these like conglomerations, so they only have like one or two regulatory fees, but they're still running, a lot of them are still running these other trucks through and.
I mean, I agree, we don't need to have anybody else coming in here trucks, but like, say, there's an 80-year-old man that gets two bags of garbage a month, and he takes it up here and counts them two bags a month. That's going to be the only thing.
Yeah, they're going to be paying a gas.
I can check and see if we're allowed, you know, tell everybody, or if people can't opt out. So I can try.
Well, I think you can, I think if it's a hardship, there is a, there's a way around it for hardship. The council.
I have not looked at that.
Will you look into that? Oh, yeah.
Because I think there would probably be a handful of those, but I have a feeling most of them are right there.
I'll confirm.
I got it.
Prohibit the other.
I understand.
Somebody come to their house to pick it up.
Yeah.
Someone who literally is carrying their own somewhere else.
Yeah, because a lot of people recycle, you know, they may not have two, three bags a month or something. And then you'd pay for an hour bag, I think, or something like that.
And like I said, I mean, I think if you can, if there's a, if there's a hardship, you've got an older person that comes and council reviews it, then it should be up to the council to allow that individual to opt out for hardship purposes.
And you'd want to probably, I don't know how your rates are going to compare to other services.
They're a fraction.
It's not like if somebody's going to opt out here is just using another service. But it's possible, so you probably want to just make sure.
No, once they find out what we're charging, we usually don't have an issue with.
Well, I think that's what normally practically happens. I don't know. Cans used to be the issue, and everybody wanted the cans, so no matter what that cost.
Yes, we have an abundance of cans right now.
So if you want to put it on the January agenda, I can answer those for them.
Okay, perfect. Next up is the city property lot on Pickens Street.
More business and information for us?
Was there?
Well, this is, we discussed it last month. I think David wanted to go look at it again, had time to go look at it, so.
I think you all in a sudden were to vote to sell it.
Yeah, so we just, I printed some stuff off from Keep Public, just so you can actually see the, it's the first little tab thing in Section 8. There is a overview of a lot.
What I confirmed is that we could, if you wanted to sell it, we could make it not be non-conforming anymore.
One of the Gators, the one that's on the south side of it, said that the city's actually put it up for sale all back and had, and it didn't ever something added to it that you could not build on it. And I guess they took bids on it way back when and then just didn't accept anything. So the last time they tried to do anything with it, it was listed that you couldn't build on it. So either way, I honestly figured that one of the abutting properties will end up purchasing it, would be my guess, but either way, if the, it's listed, it's building on it.
They would really have no need to, they would, unless they had an interest in it next to them, they would really have no need for, right?
Yeah, well, just to expand upon their property.
Right, I mean, it could be used for presumably an accessory structure. I mean, if you want to build a garage on it, or a barn, or something like that, next to your house. You can use it for that, but it can't be.
As a price for a principal resident.
Not leaving space, not leaving space.
Correct. I mean, I don't know what, I have to look at our ordinance on like guest houses or something. They have to be combined. I mean, it basically would become a larger lot, and then you could do with your extra property, whatever you could otherwise do with extra property that you have.
So really and truly, I mean, it needs to be advertised correctly because the only people that would really have an interest in bidding on that would be the neighbors, right?
It's possible that that's true, that it's open to anybody. If somebody wants a piece of land that they can't put a house on, they are welcome to buy it.
You can't stop them.
See, my ones have a place to come and sit and think, I don't know. So what we do is advertise and pay for bids, is what you would ultimately.
Yeah.
Certainly like the adjoining property owners.
Absolutely, yes.
But we can structure it so it's not a non-conforming lot anymore.
Do you want to keep the pitch on that?
I will, yeah.
Because I think that would be really fun.
That's a lot bigger piece of property than what we're, we got up our water tank here. That's a lot bigger piece of property than what we're, we got up our water time here. Can we not do that as a little park if you're done with that, instead of, of our, I'm not good at hard and long.
We've already spent.
Problem is, is we've, you're, you're between a rock and a hard place. You've got an established park that we've already spent Spots dollars on.
At least not a hillside, that's got a pretty good slope to it, doesn't it?
I think so, but the issue with the, the other piece where the basketball court is, is we already spent Spots funds on it, so we had talked to the GMA attorney before dividing that parcel to give the tower back to the plant. And we were not gonna get in trouble for anything as long as we did something up there, since we already spent some Spots funds on that property.
Yeah, that, that's where we.
That was the, like, the holdup with stuff.
How much did they spend up there, ten thousand?
Eleven.
I don't know, it was twelve thousand several years, I mean, it's all, there's notebooks in there with the list of everything.
And you could fund it back out of the general fund or something like that, if you wanted to.
There's, it's just a process for it, it's not that simple, 'cause it becomes an hard finding, you have to advertise everything in the paper.
I don't think, it, it would be different if it wasn't already listed, from, from what Kay said, it would be different if it wasn't already listed as an established park. But it was listed in, in, existed as a, an established park, that's the problem with it.
Yeah, it wasn't new, so.
I would, you know, if it was a nice place to.
Michael Kidd sent some different options down for that.
Yeah.
Which kind of dumbed it down a little bit.
And I'll get those over to you, and I don't know if you have them yet, but.
I sent it to William, because William did a talk at a meeting.
I'll get them over to you, David, as well, I'm gonna make those as well. All right, so process is to advertise for bids for that parcel, let the adjoining property owners know, and you're gonna do the garbage. How long does it need to run in the paper?
I have to look at the legal requirements, I'll let you know.
Okay. It needs to run in both papers, or just normally do, just to cover bases? Anybody have any questions regarding that parcel, or the process?
Long as we can work it, where there's no, by on bill, leaving spice.
Non-conforming, all righty.
So do you wanna vote to do that process?
Yeah, we can exhale, turn down the bid if it's not enough.
That is correct.
All right, can, I get a motion to approve the, the bid, the bid going out for the property on, um, the lot, the vacant lot on Pickens Street that the city owns?
As a non-conforming.
As a non-conforming.
I'm not voting.
Okay, James?
Say.
Nathan, I mean, I dig it, all in favor? Unanimous, did I hear you say I?
Yeah.
Okay, great, all right, estimate, estimate on the gravel for, um, the ground lease that we have for the, uh, that we have for the sanitation trucks?
Um, William Hickon sent the estimate over, who went and looked, he was, he asked like what we wanted, I wasn't very sure, I just asked for him to go put eyes on it, since he was the expert, um. He sent the estimate back over what he thought, because we're just dealing basically with a rough piece of land. This would give, um, gravel coming in, a pad, area that had gravel, and in conclusion, I guess, he explained it to me, but it was, I guess it was basically the, the under gravel stuff that.
Service now.
Yeah, just to get your base, and then the stuff that goes over it, just so it doesn't wash away.
This would give us a spot to, a, a safe spot to put our sanitation trucks and get it out of the eye of everywhere else, both of them, um.
We can get a couple cameras out there once it's done.
Yeah, if we need to get, we can get a camera out there. Uh, I do recommend doing it, 'cause even if we are to, are able to buy, um, a couple acres of land that comes up here, it, it'll still take us a little bit to get that land prepped and put a, put a, you know, maintenance horn on it, if that's what you guys opt-for. So this is a, it is temporary, but it's a cost to do a business, and it'll, it'll serve its purpose for the next couple of years.
And it, it says estimate twelve logs, so it could take ten or.
Yeah, he said, 'cause he asked, he goes, well, how do you, do you need to do it by load, you know, I wasn't sure, I said, whatever you feel is the most transparent way to put it out there, what your guess is, so.
That's a good price on the lot.
He's always been really fair with the city, yeah, felt like, especially with it being him.
We didn't pay six fifty log for it.
So? Can I get a motion to approve the nine thousand eighty dollars for the gravel, for our ground lease?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll say, can it?
James, all in favor? Unanimous.
Now, he's gonna come and pack it in at the time.
I'm hoping so, it has a, an equipment placing stone on there, so, hope these little drop in the half, I needed exactly.
Yeah, that water gratter, blocks and stones, but he's got a rather.
And then, um, new business, uh, number nine, um, employee bonuses, uh, Christmas bonuses, are we gonna still do those this year? You good with it?
Signed as last year.
Yep, you good with it? What was it last year?
About five thousand. Oh, she didn't even take a breath, she's.
I'm sorry.
Take care of that. Yeah, the attorney.
I can send it over to you.
Yeah, we do, so, um, can I get a motion to approve the employee bonuses for this hour, for five hundred dollars each?
I'll let you know.
James, David, all in favor?
Say.
Unanimous, thank you, heard you, William.
Does the council give it to you?
Man, before we.
Y'all get hugs before you come so young.
Yeah, before. And so the next team, it was James and David, and now I need a motion adjourned, and please see me before you leave.
For hugs.
David?
I'll say it.
James?
Well, you boys are on.
All in favor? Unanimous.